The Order of Planning and Zoning and Building Committee, roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sussmarzki. Alderwoman Ames. Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here. And we have a quorum. Next, going to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 27, 2025.
Okay.
Any corrections to the minutes? No corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is a report and recommendation reconsideration of the special use of major utilities and public service facilities and zoning variation for the new water tower at 310 East Irving Park Road, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Right.
Director, you have a presentation.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alan Lang and I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Wooddale. I know we've discussed this a few times at the committee and council level, but since there's some renewed interest and some resident concerns that have been raised, I think I'll start back with some of the background as to the existing system, the need for a new tower, and how we came about selecting the location. So the city operates its water system on two separate pressure zones. A low-pressure zone, they're separated by that purple dotted line there, that would be the boundary between the zone. The low-pressure zone is south of that line, serves the majority of the residential areas in the town's central business district. The high-pressure zone is basically the northern industrial area, north of that dotted line. City has two elevated storage tanks, otherwise known as water towers. Tower one, which was what we're discussing tonight, is located on the lower-pressure zone at the north wastewater treatment plant. It's a 100,000 gallon tank. The tower two, located on the higher-pressure zone, is up on Allen Drive, the industrial district, and that's a 500,000 gallon tank. So right now, a majority of our water usage, that's water sold to customers, is on Zone One, it's the larger area, the majority of the consumption. However, because we can't bring more water into the system than we're able to store at any given time, a majority of our water imported is on the high-pressure zone, and that means we have to move water consistently from Zone Two to Zone One through a pressure reduction station in order to subsidize that production on Zone One. Now, as we continue to develop throughout the city, new developments in the industrial district, multifamily units on Wooddale Road, that need to subsidize production on Zone One is going to increase and is going to continue to tax both systems. Focusing in on Tower One, the tower was constructed in the late 1960s when Wooddale had a significantly lower population. As I mentioned, it's only 100,000 gallons. That doesn't offer us much in the means of operational efficiency or emergency reliability. The pumps have to cyclone off and on more frequently as the level of the tower rises and falls throughout the day. That adds wear and tear on the pump, leads to more pressure fluctuations throughout the systems, water hammer, all things that lead to more water main breaks, disruptions to our customers, water loss, staff time overhead, all that additional cost. It also doesn't offer much in the means of emergency storage. Ideally, you would have an average day's usage of water stored up in the air. With the current configuration, we have about half of our day's usage. And as I mentioned earlier, the need for a new tower is ever more apparent as we continue to develop in the future. So for those reasons, it's recommended that we can reconstruct the tower with a 750,000 gallon tank. And when looking at a location to reconstruct the tower, we establish shovel criteria. First, in order to serve the low-pressure zone, it needs to be located on Zone One, so south of that purple dotted line there. Ideally, you would have it in an area of concentrated water usage, so the water turns over more frequently and you don't get water quality issues within the tank, the potential for bacterial outbreaks and things of that nature. You need ready access to an adequately sized transmission main, in our case, 12-inch size or greater. Ideally, we would have it on a property already owned by the city so that we don't have to purchase new property to construct the tank. And then there's constructability issues to consider, adequate staging area, site accessibility and security, the elevation of the site and its proximity to the airport. Ideally, you wouldn't build in a floodplain if you could avoid it, and then, of course, impact to residents. So with those criteria in mind, we set about looking for a new site. This is a map of Zone One near the center of town where a majority of our usage is. City-owned properties are highlighted in yellow. 12-inch water mains or larger are in green, and the purple is the floodplain for Salt Creek. So as you go through here, number one, not going to build on City Hall, not going to build on the clock tower, not going to want to build on the floodplain properties in the residential areas. You might have space at the metro lot if you're willing to give up a few parking spaces, but you see you're relatively great distance from an adequately sized main there. Longer the run for the lead to the tower, the more pressure you lose. Same for if you have a lot of bends in the pipe. So the further the distance is from the transmission main, the more likelihood that you're going to want to loop that system, meaning you have multiple connection points to a transmission main. So in the case of the metro lot, you would probably want to connect it to both the Commercial Street Main and the Wooddale Road Main. As you can imagine, that would be an exorbitantly high construction cost to do that. We're not going to want to build on any developable sites in the future, and I'll touch base on that in regards to 310 Central when we go through the preferred sites. We generally avoided the Commercial Street corridor for a couple of reasons. Number one, we didn't want to interfere with any plans for the future park in that area. If you're going to construct on that site, you're going to want to put it as far west as possible, that's solidly within the floodplain. And then again, you're putting yourself further away from any transmission mains. You're going to probably want to loop it off of the Wooddale Road Main and the Irving Park Road Main, which means you would have to bore under the train tracks. That involves Metro. You see there's a gap here in the 12-inch main on Irving Park Road. For whatever reason, it goes down to a six and an eight inch there. You're going to want to eliminate that bottleneck, so you're going to wind up replacing a fair amount of main underneath Irving Park Road, all things that add increased construction costs. So with those in mind, you have just a few other locations that we focused in on as part of our study with H.R. Green. We identified four, the existing site, and then three alternates. Site three down here, on the corner of Addison Road and Forest Preserve, we're not going to build a water tower there that's kind of universally hated amongst everybody. It's far from the town's center business district, it's right in the residential area, it's in the floodplain. Really, the only thing that it had going for it is it has access to that Addison Road Main. So focusing in on sites one, two, and four. The existing site, in a perfect world, this is where we would build a tower. You know it's a secure location, it has the infrastructure in place. The major drawback to this is with the limitations in space on site, you would have to take the existing tower down completely in order to begin construction on the new tower. That leaves us without a tower of any kind for at least a year, year and a half during construction. We don't know how our system's going to respond to that. They think, you know, there's plenty of space here, but when you start looking at the infrastructure, the main discharge from the UV building to Salt Creek runs just north of that site right now. And then north of that is the space that was intentionally left for the possibility of a future clarifier, which is going to come in need if we ever really want to decommission our south wastewater treatment plant and direct all the flow to north plant. So for that reason, that hatched area there is the buildable space on that lot. I'm sorry, this map on the right here, that's the proximity to residential properties. The red circle is 250 feet of the tower, purple circle is 500 feet of the tower. Really, aside from the Grove Avenue apartments across Salt Creek, very minimal impact to residents in this area. The tower height would be the same as the existing tower, obviously, because the site's the same elevation. The second site, here behind Commercial Street, I'm sorry, here behind City Hall, a property that this city recently acquired. Pros for it, you can keep the existing tower online, has some adequate space for constructability, for staging equipment and materials. Major drawbacks, obviously, close proximity to residential properties. You see within 250 feet there, there's several properties, even more within 500 feet. It also had the greatest distance to reach a transmission main than the other three sites identified. You would have to go north to center and then out to Wooddale Road. Again, at that distance and that amount of bends, you're probably going to want to loop it back on the south side of City Hall and make another connection with Wooddale Road. The tower height here would be the same as the existing site approximately, a little higher construction cost though due to the distance of the feeder main. Not going to spend much time on Site Three at all. Again, not anything good really going for that. So focusing in on Site Four, 310 East Irving Park, this site pretty much checked all of our boxes. It's owned by the city, we're able to keep our existing tower online, the elevation of the site is higher, so the tower can be shorter, which brings down construction costs. There's a 12-inch main that runs directly across the site there, gives us ready access. You see the map on the right there, within 250 feet, there's no residential properties. That large parcel there on the south is a Tall Oaks Detention Basin, and then just a few properties within 500 feet of the site. So we're looking at this as a developable property. As we know, we're installing a traffic signal at the intersection of Central Avenue and Irving Park Road, extending Central Avenue to the south with the goal of spurring development in this area. We're looking for consolidating lots into larger developments. That's the goal, that's why this area was rezoned not long ago. So once we extend Central Avenue to the south and dedicate the right-of-way, the buildable space on this parcel gets significantly reduced, doesn't really become a viable development for many businesses. But on the right there, you see it kind of lends itself perfectly for use as a public utility. And then on the right there is how the tower would lay out with the proposed roadway. We do our best to avoid any impacts to residential areas, but it's not uncommon to see water towers close to residential properties. These are our neighboring communities here, all of them have water towers within closer proximity to residences than we're proposing here. So again, while we try to limit any impacts to residents, it's not uncommon to see them in residential areas. So in comparing the four sites, you see the scoring matrix here that was completed by H.R. Green. Site Four had the most advantages, least amount of disadvantages, that's why it was our recommended location. Presented it to the Public Works Committee over a couple of meetings back in March 2024. That site was approved, we brought the design agreement in May 2024, that was approved. The design is now complete. We've gotten the special use from the Community Development Commission, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board and the City Council. On March 26, we got our FAA approval. Basically, all we're waiting on now is our comments back from the IEPA, and we'll be ready to bid. With contractor availability and material lead times, we don't expect construction to start until sometime in 2026. So that's a bit of the background, how we arrived to where we are today. If we were going to change gears at this point, we'd pretty much have to go back to square one, new design agreement, identify a new site, and, you know, added costs, not just for the design agreement, but for the cost of the tower itself in another location would likely be increased, and, you know, at least a year delay in construction. That's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions?
So Alderman Messina.
Go back to the pros and cons. So I know you didn't really touch on it that much, but on Site One, which is the existing site, right? Can you talk a little bit about what the risk is of running both, right? I know I've heard a lot about running pumps simultaneously, what that risk is. But also, still have yet to hear, I know I've asked, like, I can't imagine any time a city does a water tower that they automatically have to move it. So I mean, maybe it's a question for H.R. Green. Is it reasonable to say that a lot of people will build right next to the existing one as in proposed in Site One?
Yeah, like I said, you know, if there was adequate space to build it right next to the existing tower, that's, it's wouldn't even be a conversation, that's 100% what we would have done. Having to take the tower down, these are some operational concerns for us, an emergency backup reserve. We wouldn't have, you know, we would be continuously running off pumps, that increases the wear and tear on the pumps. If we lose the pumps, there's nothing to help maintain the pressure in the system. If the pressure drops below 20 PSI, you have to issue a citywide boil order. We don't really want to be one of those communities on the news that you hear about because you had to issue a citywide boil order or can't provide water to your customers.
I don't know, I guess the question is, has it been done in another community? Has something like Site One been done anywhere else?
I'm sure it has, yeah, I'm sure they've taken towers offline. Do you guys want to touch on that at all?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Ravijah Rahman, project manager for the project. And can everybody hear me? Sorry, my throat is.
Yes.
So to answer the question from Alderman, yes, it can be built on the same location, it's being built, but the problem here is of, can we take the tower down? It's going to take at least, they're on a cruise, really, the cruise, only finite number of crews are there, I mean, construction crews. So this project, if we get bid it this spring or summer, by the time the crew assembles on the site, it's going to take at least six months. Actual construction is going to 67 months. Then they have, because of the weather season changing, they have to paint the tower. You can't paint the tower when the temperature is below 40 degrees. So you'll wait for the spring season to come back again. So you are going to have at least 18 months to two years of no storage tank. And that's one of the issue that we are trying to avoid here.
Go ahead.
So if I heard you correctly, I get the seasonality. I don't think anybody's devastated if they have to wait for it to be painted. And so, forget the paint, how much construction, like, because I keep hearing two years and maybe it's to scare people, but forget the paint. How much time would that be? Is that 12 months, 18 months?
Six to eight months for actual construction of the tower.
Construction, okay.
Yeah. And you can't put the tower, you have to still disinfect the tower because IEPA requires the tank, tower to be disinfected, it has to pass the test. So ideally, I would not recommend the city to put the tank into service and then come back later on to paint the tower, because you'll have to make sure the tank is dry enough, there is no wetness inside the tank to paint it. You know, there's, can it be done? Yes, it can be done, but do we want the city to go through the route? I would not recommend it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, a couple. So when you're talking about paint, you're talking about paint inside also?
Inside and outside.
Just so, I just wanted to, so painting outside, painting inside is the one that's critical to get that up and running.
To prevent it from corrosion coming into the tank.
And passing the test for the IEPA. Okay, so, construction cycling, can't we start construction of one and get the base going up, have the thing, whatever, it's 30%, 50% built before we dismantle?
You have to imagine.
The first one?
You have to imagine there's going to be big trucks, I mean, when I say.
I can imagine.
So it's going to, you have to, the way it's built is they fabricate the tower on the floor, it's panels, the panel is lifted up, and then you're going to have a welder go up with.
Right, so, but what I'm saying, before you get up to the top.
Yeah.
The bulk of it, getting that base up and getting the foundation, all that part. So let's say that's 30 or 40% of the construction of the thing, then tear down the original tower. So you're reducing the amount of time that we're without the water tower.
Yeah, it can be done. We'll have to work with the contractor and the sequencing, will it impact the cost for the contractor? We don't know, because contractors will like to come in and get the job done at the same time, because, so that's, I mean, again, can, there's ways in which you can do the project. I'm not going to say can't do it. Will the cost go up? I can answer the question today.
I would assume it would go up, right? Because it tenders, being in that field, but not as much as it would go up trying to move it to somewhere else or.
Yeah.
Eliminate where it's at now. I mean, I don't know that that would be exponentially increasing enough, right, to get everybody to go to absolute nil.
Did you have a question, if you want to step up to the podium? Yeah.
I'm Ron Crome with H.R. Green as well, and to answer Art, or maybe try to expound upon what he's asked, because of the proximity of the existing 100,000 gallon tank going to a 750,000 gallon tank and building adjacent to it, is there enough room to build the foundation of the new one adjacent to the $100,000, or 100,000 gallon?
Okay, I didn't understand the question. That's going to be a challenge, because when you, to build a foundation, they have to excavate it, they'll have to do, depending upon what those, I'm assuming they'll have to do pile foundations, so you're going to have pile foundations, you're going to imagine piling into the ground, that could kind of damage this tank's foundation too. Because of the proximity to the creek here, so I'm assuming you'll have to do pile foundation.
Go ahead.
So that eliminates pretty much any other option other than taking that down, running our system on pumps or however you balance that out. Speaking to that part, which is what everybody's worried about, what are the issues that come with that? What are the big concerns?
Yeah, I can take that. I think that this project is driven by the need is, they have one elevated storage tank, they have two ground storage tanks, so they have big 100,000 gallon capacity, the tank is draining much quickly, so the pumps are continuously, when I say the pump, I'm talking the ground storage tank is continuously pumping to, and that is causing pressure fluctuation in the pressure zone one. So like Director Allen was saying, that that causes water main break. When you have pressure breaks in the system, the water main is fairly old, I mean, it's not fairly new, so over the type period of time, there's a possibility of water main breaks happening. And also, it's not energy efficient to keep on having the pumps back and forth. So by having a larger storage tank, you are preventing the pumps from constantly coming back and forth.
No, I understand that piece, but what I'm saying is, when we take that 100,000 gallon tank down, right? And we try to construct a new one, how are we balancing out the system? We're just running the system on pumps?
Pump continuously.
The pumps are continuously. 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 going to run, and we have a window of 14 to 18 months that we have to depend on those pumps. Is that what?
Yeah, that's the same thing, like Director was saying, that if the pumps fail, you run out of.
Are there two pumps? One pump, two pumps?
There's four on that end of the system. So depending on, typically, we'll run one pump at a time and cycle through them to evenly distribute the wear and tear. Depending on the usage needs, at any given time, we might have to run, you know, simultaneous pumps. And if the pump station fails, if we lose the entire pump station, then there's nothing to maintain the pressure in the system.
So.
Go ahead.
Explain the pump station, because I'm having a hard time visually understanding where the water's at, where the pumps. If the tower's gone.
The pump station.
Pumps are in the ground somewhere?
It's at 444 Potter Street, 444 West Potter Street. That's the pumping station. Water comes in from DuPage Water Commission at Park Lane.
All right, so that's where all the.
Pressure gets reduced, the water can either flow directly into the system or go into the reservoir where it gets pumped out by the pumps.
So to get to, let's say, a catastrophic failure, we'd have to have one pump fail, two pumps fail, three?
Yeah, the, I mean, you would have to lose the whole station, which we have backup generation there, but, you know, there's instances where a pipe breaks where it comes into the system, and you effectively, although you didn't lose the pumps, you've lost the ability to pump out of that system. And there was actually a situation with DuPage Water Commission within the last couple of months where they lost completely one of their critical pumping facilities, and they told all of their communities that they would have to rely on emergency storage for the time being. Luckily, it was a short duration, it was, I think, less than 24 hours, but, you know, things like that can and do happen.
Yeah, I was just, I'm just trying to figure out what the.
The consequences.
Consequences are, and the likelihood of that, you know, what risk we're accepting if we make that.
Definitely increased pressure fluctuations, which would lead to more frequent water main breaks, just lost water, more staff time, more disruption to residents, more wear and tear on the pumps, and there's just a lot of uncertainty. We've never had to operate without a tower really, so we don't know how our system would react hydraulically.
Does the engineer have a comment on how it would react?
I mean, basically, that same thing, it's operations issue. I mean, the operations was driving this project, the water operations, they see the constant up and down of the pumps, maintenance, pumps will have to be replaced more often because you have to constantly, it's like wear and tear on a car. If you can't run in the car, you have to change the car quickly. So one more thing I want to bring up before answering the question is that, being close to the creek, again, we're assuming all the ground is going to be the same, but among all the sites, this is the site which is close to a creek, so that means the foundation is going to be requiring more improvements. I mean, it's not going to be easy foundation, definitely is going to be pile foundation, and when you do piling foundation, we don't know what else you're going to see there. That, that could also add to the complexity. Right now, we don't know the soil condition, but I can assume, being close to the river creek, the groundwater table is going to be high, so they'll have to bring the water table to a certain point to do the foundation, because you can't pour concrete in a liquid surface, you have to bring it down. So that cost is going to go up to here, so the foundation improvement. So, so that's constructability issues here, cost wise also, this is likely to be a more expensive proposition. So there are, and also convenience for the operations team.
Could you speak to the expense piece, so would that be?
I don't want to throw a number here, but I can just say because of the proximity to the creek, the groundwater table is going to be high, so they'll have to dewater. Typically, when you do projects, you have to dewater the thing to bring that groundwater, so the dewatering cost is going to be, which may not be the case on the other site, at least for the site we are looking at, where we looked.
On the other side, there would be no dewatering?
No, no dewater requirement. It'll be just groundwater, but this being close to the creek, water table is going to be high, so they'll have to pump it down to do the project.
And this tower would be about 14 feet higher, adding, you know, just a little bit more material cost.
The new tower is 14 feet?
If we were to construct the tower at the existing site, it would be 14 feet higher than the 310 East Irving site because of the elevation of that site.
And then being higher, it triggers more issues with FAA clearance too. I mean, we are, all the sites are at the threshold, so if you go a little bit higher, FAA could even step back and say, no, you cannot build that, because the problem is, we are within 10,000 feet of an active runway, all the sites. So that FAA, if you're beyond the 10,000 feet of an active runway, then, then all the FAA requirements will not be as stringent. Since we're within 10,000 feet of an active runway, we do list the number of the high runway close to our airport. So you need to let the planes give the trajectory to go up into the altitude, so.
We want it higher to keep the planes up higher.
Yeah, that's right. You can't go it high, you know, so. So that's a problem too. We have to keep in mind too that we may not get approval from FAA to build that tower to, for the height, beyond a certain height.
How high is that tower now?
I don't know the exact.
154.
154 feet.
Okay, I have a question. So April 25, 2024, Director Lance, so we approved the engineering costs for $142,930, like you, you know, you explained. So what happens to that engineering cost if the council decides not to go with this site?
We would just have to eat the, eat the cost and incur new costs, because we would have to basically completely redo Phase Two engineering at a new site, new drainage study, new site plans. Beginning all the way back at new surveys, so you would have to basically re-incur that cost.
So 142,000 is going to go away, poof, right?
Correct.
Okay. Alderman, Alderwoman Ames?
So when you were talking about building, potentially building it on the same site where the tower is now, and taking that tower down and running on pumps too, it sounds to me like it's pretty risky that we've never done that before, to just run on the one water tower and not have, you know, elevated water for, this would be up to 18 months or something like that. So I could see where the pumps would be. So I could see where the pumps would be, you're saying it would have to pump from the north part of town to service everybody in the rest of the town from one water tower for potentially a year and a half?
Yeah, as it stands today, we pump about 240,000 gallons per day from System 2 to System 1 just to subsidize the production, because the majority of the usage is on System 1. So if you take the 100,000 gallon tank away, we, we'll probably have to subsidize that even more to be able to, you know, maintain the pressure throughout the system.
Go ahead.
So, if we've never done that, and then potentially doing it for over, you know, a year and a half or so, I mean, that, that just seems very risky to me, and I appreciate the comments either way on that. But, I mean, for one day to not have a water tower is one thing, but to go for that long and have that out of service, that just, that is a little, little risky for me to just completely take that tower down and rely on water during that. It just doesn't seem like a good idea.
Alderman, Artie Woods?
To change gears just a little bit, the newly acquired land behind City Hall for that option, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't, I thought that land wasn't buildable at all to begin with because the old pool is underground still? Are part of that, is that true? Do we even know if it's a viable option?
We haven't done any detailed surveys there. We did do some site forings for preparation of the, the park project. I'm not sure what all they found there as far as, you know, suitability of the soil. Anything can be built anywhere essentially, but, you know.
We don't know what the real cost is till we know what's underground?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Thanks. Are there, I know that we haven't talked about it, but are there any other options? So, in my head, I'm going, we want to change that 100,000 gallon tank to 750,000 gallons, right? That's the concept. But could we get that done, keeping that tank and building a smaller tank, a third tank? Is that a?
At a different site, you're saying?
Well, even if it was at the same site, I'm not saying, so let's, you know, but could that be smaller? Are there other options other than what we're talking about? I know we haven't discussed them, but now that it's back on the table, are there other options that we haven't even considered?
So, site wise, I mean, there, we haven't acquired any new property that would be as suitable as any of these that I'm aware of. For the given sites, you know, the, the cost difference between a 500,000 gallon tank and a 750,000 gallon tank is pretty minimal in the grand scheme of things, so you might as well build the larger tank to have, you know, more than your day's average usage in the air, and plan for, you know, emergency reliability and future development as well. And I don't think there's really any less impact with a 500,000 gallon tank on any site than there would be with a 750,000 gallon.
Follow up, another question. Can you, so we have these big ground level storage tanks, right, that are 30 foot tall or whatever, that hold, what do they do for the system?
So those just store water to be pumped out. Those don't have, elevated storage tanks are different because they provide head pressure, which helps sustain the pressure throughout, the, the ground level tanks don't provide any additional pressure, because they don't have enough head pressure on them.
Alderman Corrielli?
Is another option just to do away with water towers altogether and just use pumps?
Yeah, you could, I mean, City of Chicago generally runs off of pumps throughout their system. Each individual building, though, usually has its own type of storage at the top of it to help subsidize their own pressure throughout the building.
The building I live in doesn't have a tower on top, or
Right.
Storage tank on top.
Because we're pumping it, yeah, to you at a high enough pressure.
We pump it up the building too, so you'll supply our pressure to our whole building. So what would the cost for replacing towers with just pumps all the time? Is that possible? And what, is it cost comparable? Or where are we at with that?
You know, running off of pumps continually and just changing out pumps however many years, as it is increasing the maintenance on them, I don't think it's a very cost viable option. It's not something we looked at in any great detail. And then if you lose the pumps, once again, you lose the pressure, there's no backup in your system to help stabilize the pressure, and you have that constant jarring, starting and stopping of pumps, which creates pressure fluctuations and water hammer and causes more rain breaks.
But if they're running continuously, you wouldn't have an on and off, would you?
Yeah, they, they don't, wouldn't run continuously.
If that's the only source.
They're variable frequency drive based on the pressure in the system, so as the usage increases, the pumps would kick up. As the usage drops, the pumps would throttle back down. So, and then when you're switching over pumps, one stops, one starts, there's, you know, differences in the pressure in that area.
Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah. Honestly, I thought we talked about a smaller tower and keeping the other one, but if we kept the other one, then we'd still have to do the, all the cathodic processes and repainting, which was 500 to 600,000 anyways, right? That was part of the disguise. I thought we just kind of touched on it, but not a lot.
Yeah, then you would have three assets to maintain instead of two, and again, you're right, the existing tower is due for a painting, and painting it is going to be upwards of 3/4 to a million. It was half a million to paint the ground level reservoir at Riker. So, an elevated storage tank with the containment system is going to be upwards of 750,000.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to approve, we have a second roll call, please. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm here with some other residents of our neighborhood that are near where this proposed site is for rezoning again tonight. I thank you for giving this some reconsideration, because I know that it was on the, on the track to be approved last time this came up. So I'm very appreciative of the fact that your, you know, the questions and the answers tonight indicate that you are giving some careful consideration to this thing again, and I, I for one appreciate that. I think some of the answers, though, that I heard from the staff and the engineer, they're a little bit using examples of the extreme risk that could happen. That's probably what they ought to be doing, telling you what could happen, the nth degree. But I'm not going to go into a whole bunch of detail about that, maybe somebody else wants to. But I just want to say that, you know, when you're looking at these different sites, that was another part of their presentation, it seemed like a pretty limited number of sites that were looked at. And, you know, the current site, I can see why that is the ideal. I think all of us who have looked at this think that that's one of the sites that should be considered again. And if there's some way that that can be done, you know, make a move to do that, even if that means maybe moving something around there on that site. Because that way, we're avoiding some of the other issues that we're going to bring up here tonight again. For example, the, you know, well, before I get off of that about the merits of the water part, I just want to say that water quality, number one, I can see why that is a high priority as you're looking at this thing. Same for the elected officials, the staff, everybody else, every citizen I talk to, they care about that. Okay, so that's number one. Appreciate that. But at the same time, it's like, where do you do this? And to select that one site out of a minimum of, you know, apparently only three viable sites out of four, is pretty minimal in terms of the effort made to look around. Another thing to consider, aside from the public works part of it, is on the business side. Comprehensive plan, which I've gone through again, your zoning ordinance, all of that talks about this area, this particular site at 310 Irving Park Road, as being business. Town center business district, business oriented, open opportunities for either that site to be developed on its own or perhaps combined with nearby sites for business, tax generation, jobs, all of that. That was what the idea was. That's what I thought it was going to be. And then all of a sudden, we hear about this thing, and I'll get to that in just a moment about how that was heard about. Another thing at that site, I understand there's a traffic signal that's being planned for that site. Now, why would you need a four-way traffic signal at a site for a public facility like this? You don't. So the idea is, you know, that's another way to facilitate business along that corridor there in a way that hasn't been, hasn't been done. Another thing, I heard the word security mentioned tonight. Some residents I talked to actually brought that up to me. I hadn't really thought about this. But that site is not near or adjacent to or part of an existing city facility. So, who's going to take care of that security over there? I doubt if you're going to have a police officer like that's here tonight assigned to watch that site to make sure everything's okay. At least where they're at now, at the current site, you have a city facility, you have some security there in terms of the way it's laid out, in terms of fencing wall and all that stuff. Yes, I know there was talk about putting fencing up and other things to try to secure this site, but it's basically going to be there out on its own, open to whoever might go in there, even just for trespassing and graffiti type activity. But perhaps even worse than that could happen at that site. So as long as people are talking about tonight about, you know, what are the nth degree problems that might happen with, with the water system, well, there's things that could happen there with that site that by its very nature is not, not really protected. Now I'd like to go on and mention to you about the citizens that I've talked to. I've walked the neighborhoods around this site, and I know it was said here that there's only a handful of homes that are within 500 feet of this site. I think that's how I heard about this at the Community Development Commission meeting, is because my property just happened to be barely within the site of the circumference of the legally required notice for that particular hearing that night. I didn't know anything about it. I showed up, and that's when I heard for the first time, you know, what was being considered here. So, there was no communication, and I said this the last time I was at the city council meeting, of any significant amount, and in some cases, none, to the citizens of our community about what this project was all about. Here it is, one of the most expensive and biggest, most noticeable, you'll never not see it, a project perhaps in the, among, among the top three or four in the history of Wooddale. And there's nothing in the community newsletter, not even a special notice going out other than that one legally required one that only went to a certain number of people, and nobody else got it. Because this is going to be seen for a mile around. This isn't a 500-foot visual blight thing. This is, this is a mile and beyond. So, again, not only for this project, but for anything else, please, for, for the sake of our community, please communicate better. If there's something we can do as citizens to help you do that, let us know. But please do a better job of it, telling us about what's going on with these things. So, I want to also hear, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're the one I give this to, but I have, I have a petition here. Again, I brought one the last time, I think I only, I think I had like 22 people on there. It's now up to 66. I could have kept going, because every place I go, I haven't yet to come across anybody that says that they, they just love this site, that they embrace this site. Nobody has. And I just ask them an open-ended question. Do you know that this is being planned for this site? And then the conversation goes from there. So, can I bring this over to you, or someone take this? Okay. Okay, now that's got 66 people who signed it, it's like 40 different properties. I didn't go throughout Wooddale, but I just went to the areas that were the closest within the visual range. I, I could go further, and I'd get the same result over and over. I'll just kind of summarize it by saying this, that out of the households that are on that list, 2/3 of them are south of Irving Park, but 1/3 of them are north of Irving Park. I walked the neighborhood immediately adjacent to where I live. I also walked the neighborhood to the north. So that, that means there are residents of both Ward 1 and Ward 4 that do not like this, that do not want to see this here. And, in fact, some of the more emphatic ones were in Ward 4, as I was trying to explain, you know, and they were just kind of somewhat panicked about the idea, you know, what's this going to do to their properties? And these are people, the ones that I had the longest conversations with were the ones that have been living here the longest, that seem to have, in their mind, a stake in our community. They feel like they have an investment in their property. So, please, that's something for you to consider in addition to all the other things. I know this isn't an easy question for you to address here tonight, but please consider the community part of it too, in addition to these technical and other issues that have already been talked about. And the last thing I would like to say is that, you know, whatever you do on this, I mean, it's going to be remembered for a long time about what you did, especially if you go ahead and approve this thing. So it's like, do you really want that hanging over everybody's head? I don't want it for me. I feel like I've tried to do what I can to get the word out, and I'm hoping and praying that you do reconsider this thing and take an extra effort to look at alternative sites. Keep in mind also, and this is just something I'll throw in from my own knowledge of it, I do know, having been the city manager here years ago, I know there's some other ways that you have backup to your water system that wasn't mentioned tonight, like the interconnect between the neighboring communities. Obviously, we don't want to see the high-risk things happen that were talked about tonight, but there are backups to what's going on, and, and some other ones that we could get into if you wanted to. But I just know that, you know, there is a safety issue here, but there are safety backups there in place, some of which wasn't even mentioned here tonight. So that's what I have to offer, and thank you for listening, and ask that you please reconsider this.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so we got a, we have a roll call. We got a, hold on.
Exactly, what's the motion?
The motion is to approve the reconsideration of the special use for major utilities and public service facilities zoning variation for the new water tower 310 East Irving Park Road. That is my motion, and we got a second.
Okay. Got a question?
Another question, go ahead. Alderman Woods?
So going back, a couple of things popped in my head while we were having this conversation, and going back to the site that exists and talking about the pumps and their ability to carry on. So, if we were to take down Tower 1, because it, for maintenance and repainting and recathartic and all that other stuff, how long is that thing? I mean, that's a typical thing. So you take the system offline and you're going to run on pumps, right? Because you got to empty that.
Right.
Obviously, to dry it out and then to paint it, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to assume, what's that timeframe? Three months, four months?
Yeah, within that range, yeah, three.
So technically speaking, then, we, we could say that as a routine, when these tanks and towers get painted, they're offline and everything's running on pumps, and generally, everything works. Our concern now is, we're going to take the four months to 12 months or longer. But if we get a good construction company and we plan this out better to reduce, I know they all want to do what they want, take as much time, but we, we have the ability to write that stuff into the contract to, to reduce as much time as possible to get it up. And the painting, we, we don't, it's not imperative the outside's painted, right? We need the inside painted, it, it tested out by the IEP to make sure the water's good and flowing. So, are, I guess what I'm saying, are there any things that we could look at now, the engineering group, to go, what can we do to reduce that cycle, knowing that, and keep the thing here? It was always my idea or thought that that's probably where it should stay, as much as I know that's in my work, and maybe some people will come and go, you're an idiot, you should have pushed it over to Ward 1. But can we look at that? Do we, can we quantify that?
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to be able to come up with an answer on that tonight. I think if the council directs that they want us to explore other locations.
One last, well, I don't want to explore other locations, just get a little more information on doing, maintaining that site. on doing, maintaining that site, and things we could do to shorten the, the cycle time of construction, right? And how, how long our pumps are running, now that I know that we do that routinely, not every year, but there's a general rule throughout all the municipalities, they're doing it. They're taking these off-line for three months to six months, depending on how big they are, right? And running on pumps or other, other means to balance their system. So it's done. It's just the timing that we're looking at. So can I make a motion to table this to the next meeting, so we could get maybe some information?
Well, first, first, we've got to vote on the first motion.
Do we have legal, or is legal? Hang on a second. Oh, no, that's not me.
Go ahead.
I spoke with Attorney Bond earlier this afternoon. He did say that, a couple of different options for tonight. If we were to keep the existing location that was approved, the 310 Irving, that it would go to council next week for the approval of the special use. If we were to do anything else, basically, we're fine to table to a future committee and discuss further.
So can I ask, so would the engineers be able to get some other information? I know it would be, it would be rough information. One, there's a cost that we're talking about, and two, is there a way to cycle this to speed up getting that tank back online, reducing that risk time?
Okay, I'll, let me kind of address questions, not in any particular order. There's a question from a gentleman on security at the site. This, when we say elevated storage tank, there is going to be a base at the bottom of the security tank. It's going to have a door with alarm system on it. So the, the person who'll have, it'll be lock and key. The person with access to it will be the Public Works Department, because they're going to have controls, SCADA system and controls and everything located underneath the tank. It's going to have heated ventilators. There are locations where people have offices also on the base of the tank, because it's so big, you can have a office, some operator sits there, does work. So it's going to be protected. So it's not going to be an open site that some, some invader can go in and look at. Obviously, people can break a lock, and I'm not going to say it's going to be watery, but it's going to be a lock and key. You will have security system on the thing with the lights and everything, so there's ways in which the security will be addressed. The next question was on, can the project be shortened? There are only few, we don't want anybody to do the work. We only, we want qualified people to do the work. There are only few qualified contractors. And there are so many elevated, from what we talked to a couple of those contractors, and we're kind of getting budgeted numbers and schedule and everything, they said there's so much of tank construction going on right now. Plus, there's other communities trying to, Lake Michigan Water, that's also driving this, this crew that's kind of stretched thin. So the crew is not going to be available right away to do it. So actual construction of the tank, like I said, it's six to eight months to fabricate it. Then we'll have to wait for the weather to cooperate, to go back and paint it. There was a question on, can we paint the tank inside and not paint the outside? You cannot, you can paint it, but for that, you have to have the, the, the tank has to be drained, because it has to be, because you cannot paint, but the tank's water is there, inside is cold. So the temperature, the surface temperature of the steel has to be of certain things to do, so the tank has to be drained. So even if the tank is painted inside, for it to paint outside, you have to drain the tank, get it to the temperature that it can be painted. Because if I was going to be the inspector on the thing, I wouldn't want the contractor to paint it, and the paint is going to fail pretty quickly.
So it's a single shell, not a double shell?
It's, it's a double co, I mean, the tank is a single shell, but the painting will be two, two coatings on it. So you have to have, you have to do sandblasting, get the right thing, and then paint it. So can that be done with the tank in service is a different question. That is, most probably, no. You'll have to drain the tank to paint it. So we can explore with the contractor, see, okay, what is the minimum time you can do this project? Yes, we can do that, but based on our discussion we had, it's going to take six to eight months to build the tank, another six to eight months to paint the tank and disinfect it and pass that.
But why they're building the tank? Are they building it on-site, or are they prefabbing it in a factory somewhere?
No, they won't, they'll do fabric, everything will be done on-site, on the site. You're not going to have a.
So that, that base, those round pieces are all built, they don't break out?
Everything is built, everything is built on-site. The crew will come in with their, with their, they'll have a big crew here, like six to eight people there, and they'll get, the only thing that's going to be delivered is the steel plates. And the plates will be welded on-site, and they'll lift it up.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
I'm still confused in your timing, right? So I know we live in Chicago, I get that, but six to eight months? You mentioned it needed to be 40 degrees, correct? To paint?
Yes.
So unless something's changed, there's 12 months in a year. There is no requirement on the temperature to take down, if I heard you correctly. So if they started in March, we've waited how many years for this? I think we're all okay with it starting in a couple of years, or whatever. I know, we want, we're worried about the windows. So if we started in March, and that's three months, three months, that gets us to what? July?
Mm-hmm.
Well, luckily, we're good till October, right? So then there's another three months. We, we should make it. It's not going to get under 40 till the end of October, I would imagine.
I, I don't deny with that, Alderman, I, it can be done. If they start in March, it can be done, and by, by July, August, they'll get the construction done. Immediately, they're going to go to paint, they can get the painting done in maybe two, three months. Hopefully, the weather still cooperates in November or December, they still have the temperature, they can do everything, and be done with that. I mean, that's the best scenario, if it happens. Very happy with it. But we have to plan for the worst-case scenario. I mean, stuff doesn't always work the way we plan for. So we are talking about in the terms of 12 to 16 to 18 months is the worst-case scenario.
Got a follow-up?
And I know, you guys are consultants, right? I, that's your job. You have to give us the worst-case scenario. It's a, I think someone said up here, it's a calculated risk we have to take, and we have to weigh this with the impact on, on the homeowners, right? I'd like to see, if you guys come back, if there's a way to kind of shore up what that timeframe is, and maybe have a deeper conversation with those qualified contractors to see what that window looks like. I personally, I'm not going to speak for the council, I don't really care when this gets started, unless there's some dire need to get started. So if we have to wait two years to get started, I'm not opposed, but I would love to hear if there's a way to shorten the window once started.
Okay, so we have a question. Alderman, Artie Woods.
Thank you. Just really quick to go off of that, too, timewise, I also don't care if it takes longer to get it right. However, isn't there a sense of urgency with, I know the project came forward originally, we were talking about it a year or two ago, because of the painting and the cost involved. Is there any risk to keeping that tower, tower up an extra year? I know the money we'd be out, the $140,000, the extra year timeframe, is there any risk to issues with the existing tower?
Yeah, the, the coating system's not going to get any better during that time. You know, we also see spots of the, the welding start to fail. We've had some open areas on other tanks where we've had to, to patch it up. The tile, the tank gets inspected every year, so that'll give us a better idea of the condition that it's in, if we have to do it this year. One thing Mr. Croll pointed out is that this tank is, you know, almost 60 years old, it's getting to the end of its useful life, so I don't think it's going to suddenly crumble in the next two years.
Right.
But, you know, time is kind of of the essence here, no one delay it too much.
Thank you.
So again, we have a motion and a second for the special use for major utility, for public service facilities and zoning variation at the new location for the new water tower 310 East Irving Park Road. So roll call, please.
Just to, just want to make sure everyone's clear. So if this is approved, this moves forward to committee?
Next week.
Next week, to move forward with?
This location, yes.
As, as is, as proposed?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Roll call.
Before we, just one quick question.
Go ahead.
Engineers, could, so there's an added cost. Could we try to figure out what the added cost would be to do it at the existing location?
By added cost?
Well, you're, you're talking about foundation issues. The tower's going to be the tower, right? There's extra dewatering, we might, pylons, they might be needed deeper. Could we come up with a reasonable estimation would, if that would add 250,000, 500,000? You know, all those things are relative, or relevant.
We can, we can get an estimate. Obviously, we don't have the soil, soil condition. We, we did some soil boring.
Right.
We built a wastewater plant.
How deep, how deep do the pylons go for that? Do you, do you know, the foundation?
It depends upon the soil condition. That's, that dictates the.
Okay, I'll go to an easier question. So where, when we move it to the other site, how deep is that foundation?
You may not have to go to pile foundation. You'll just go to a standard foundation, which is about 10 to 15 feet deep. You dig up the whole thing and you pour concrete, because you have to, the whole load of the tank has to be supported to the ground. So you, you are maybe only doing a, what we call a strip footing. You basically, imagine a rectangular thing is dug up, and you do rebars and pour concrete in it. Here, because of the proximity to the creek and the groundwater table, you cannot control the water coming in, so you'll have to go to.
So when we did the treatment plant, we were probably 45, maybe 50 feet deep. You weren't here. Okay. So we, Ron, you remember? I'm pretty sure we're 40, every bit of 45 feet deep. And there was very little dewatering. There was constant, just like in any other construction site, but it wasn't abnormal?
I can't speak to the depth of, of what was needed for the wastewater treatment plant, but what I can tell you is, with the proximity of the creek, the types of soils that are around water, the high water table, you're probably going to have organics, you're going to probably have to undercut some of this soil.
And not to cut you off, I, I understand that, so, but there's got to be, so if everything's good, it's going to cost you a quarter million. If it's the worst-case scenario, it could be a million and a half.
I, I can't speak to that cost. I, all I know is, what Robbie's saying is, you're going to have a deeper fountain. At the site three away from the water, you're probably going to be on a spread footing, a pad.
Yes.
A reinforced concrete pad that can distribute the load over a larger area. In an area where you have compromised soil, which I would be willing to bet this is going to be the case because of the proximity of the creek, you're going to have to dig way down, you're going to have very specialized foundations, you might have.
All right, so I, I, let me ask you this.
Sure.
So that tank is 95 feet wide, up in the air?
At the top, yeah.
Yeah. So what, what's the foundation look like? Is there a relationship between the width of the foundation and the?
The foundation's.
It has more to do with the depth?
It, it has more to do with the, with the existing soil condition. Like what just Ron said, if you have clay, it's not good. You want to remove the unsuitable material, that's what we call unsuitable material. I don't want to go into too much of technical.
If you have clay, it's not good?
It's, it's clay, because of the, the, when the water comes, it comes, it absorbs, it then absorbs, and you, you want to remove, then peat soil, sometimes you'll hit peat. Peat is not considered to be good, so we want to take out all the things.
Okay, I don't want you to get technical either. I'm just trying to get to the point.
So it's just.
If we move this, you can't tell me how much more it's going to cost me.
I, I won't know that unless, if I, if I call up somebody to give me a number for it, the first question I ask is, do we have soil condition? Because everybody's going to be worried about giving a number without knowing what they're dealing with here, you know? That's the problem here. We just, again, we don't want to give information, throw numbers around without being able to justify.
So we, Mr. Manager. So we did soil reborings and stuff from the treatment plant, which is right around there. I mean, we were literally 25 feet away. I know that they can change. So before you throw that out, could we look at those, and would those be a good idea of what was there?
Yeah, I can do, that's what I'm offered. I can go back to the.
I'm pushing you, because we're talking about making a change, and if you're telling me there's no way in God's green earth this is going to happen.
Unfortunately, I was near, I was not working for this company when this.
All right. And I'm not trying to be.
So I'm, I'm not, I totally agree with you. I appreciate all the questions you bring, they're very good questions. I'm not questioning another question, all are great questions, and that's what I would expect everybody to ask me. But the thing is, I don't know when, what the thing, I can go back to.
No, I appreciate, I fully appreciate that.
Get the information, and, and I can show them the hypothetical issue to structural engineers, okay, based on this thing, what do you think the foundation cost is going to be? And they can give me a range, and I can say, okay, this one, what is the soil condition? We don't have soil condition there, but we do have some geotechnical data, because it took it for, there are some requirements, because the spoils have to be sent to some sites, so we have to know what is there in the spoils. So if you have some information, I can have them, give me a number, compare the two numbers and see what the difference is.
Right, and we know that that's not written in stone, that that's just still a guess.
Yeah, so.
But at least we'd have an understanding of what that is.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to go through this exercise, then you guys come back and tell me, well, it'll cost you $4 billion more, or, or we just can't do it.
In addition to that, like Director Allen said, the height of the tank is going to be higher, too, so you have to budget that cost also, so more steel, too, so.
Okay, Manager, move us, go ahead.
That's something that could happen at the next meeting. That's why I was looking at the table.
I would hesitate to expend any more engineering dollars before we even know if it could be built there from an FAA perspective, because if we're hiring at 15 feet, and the experts are saying that could be a potential problem, I'd hate to waste more money on another design unless we are from FAA.
Another area.
And they could take, I don't know how long, they're probably not very quick, but that would be something I'd like to put high on the list.
Okay. So let's have a roll call. I think we've got enough questions to answer here, so let's do a roll call on this, please.
So I was overruled on my table.
Roll call.
This has to fail first, and then?
Yeah.
We would consider the table.
Alderman Art Woods.
I abstained.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next is?
Can I motion to table that?
You can.
It's not going to be tabled. I'm upset. Yeah, next week. All right.
Next is report and recommendation for, excuse me, items to consider at future meetings. So 650 North Wooddale Road, text amendment and special use coming up April 24th. And the next one is Wooddale Park District, text amendments, rezoning and lot consolidation coming up May 8th. And also, we have another gentleman, Joe Tulo, who want to give you some time up there to express your, your issue. You have to go, you have to go to the county, state your name and, and the reason.
Yes, my name is Joe Tulo, and I'm the owner of the building at 365 East Irving, which the, was the previous home of Earth Paint, and it is now vacant, and I have tried to get the building rented. The building was built in the 60s, and that building was basically all add-ons. The back part of the building is considered to the front. What I'm asking is contractors, for example, painting, something would be low maintenance, things like that, would write, would like to rent the back of the unit. And the C1 zoning that is there right now is almost impossible to find a tenant for this. And if that building sits empty, it is not good for any community. And I've had it empty for almost two years before I had Earth Paint come in there. And one of the reasons that I rented to them was because that was the only way that I could get that thing rented. Now, each time that I would send that to a special use hearing, okay, the tenants back off and say, I don't want to wait three months, this is not a big deal, all I want to do is store some stuff in here and move on. So I'm asking for a variance from the C1. It was originally a B3, or C3 zoning when the building was built. And all I'm asking it for, at least partially the building, the front part is retail and commercial space, and the back part could be separate. So even if I could have two separate addresses to make it zoned in a different way, I, you know, otherwise, I have a square hole and a round peg, and I, it's impossible to rent this property. And I asked everyone of the Aldermen, or anyone in this thing, if they had a big building that they've invested quite a bit of money on, and they have no chance of renting it and returning any, any type of income. And if anyone has any suggestions, or if the, the village would like, I mean, if the city would like to buy from me, I would be more than, you know, to any other suggestions to get me out of this mess. If you're looking for a potential site for a water tower, I would be interested, okay? I would sell you the, the property for a new water tower.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm asking for a zoning, not to have it a special use permit each time, and have the buildings considered to be two separate buildings.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Now, I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting, let the note taker note that the same staff and elected officials are present. First, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 27th, 2025.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, first, an approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated for the 2025 through 2027 environmental mosquito management and spongy moth control program in an amount not to exceed $70,072. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman. Basically, the same terms as the previous agreement, same number of spraying, same number of special event sprays, two aerial sprays for the spongy moth control. The price has gone up just a little bit under 3% since the last three-year agreement. We did ask in response to some resident concerns that were raised recently, that we include more strict language in regards to application timing, as well as resident notification. So, those terms are expressly written in the agreement now, advanced notification to both the city and the resident requirements, as well as the timing that the applications will take place. Lastly, there has been a state law change recently regarding pesticides in the public right-of-way and the requirement to notify the public. So, there will be some added notification that Clark prepares for us to be placed on the website and social media that has information, the product being used, the area that it's being used, and that will be available to the residents, as well as a link on our website that they can go on and get notifications directly to their cell phone or email for mosquito and spongy moth applications.
So, I remember last year, we did have the couple residents who came out with it, so what notification will we change if the time changes? Because I think that was the issue, that it had changed because of weather, and they couldn't fly, and then it randomly showed up, and those were the complaints.
Specifically, for the spongy moth application, it is a little more weather-dependent, because you're using a helicopter, and you're at the whim of the FAA when they allow you to get up in the air. So, we included the stipulation that sprays will take place between the hours of sunrise at 8:00 a.m. on weekdays, I'm sorry, sunrise at 9:00 a.m. on weekdays, and sun hour, sunrise at 8:00 a.m. on weekends, to try to minimize the time where people could potentially be impacted, and that sprays that aren't able to occur within that timeframe will be rescheduled. So, if they, if they go up, they're not able to complete the spraying in that timeframe for weather or FAA reasons, they would have to cancel until the next available day.
If the time changes, would they still get that text or email notification?
Yes, they should, yeah. They should get a minimum 24-hour notice.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Performance Pipelining Incorporated for the fiscal year 2026 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in an amount not to exceed $325,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Director Lang?
So, the next three items are all related to this year's I and I program. You have the rehabilitation, which is the cast-in-place lining, the lateral repairs, the point repairs. There's also a tele, a cleaning and televising agreement in there, and then the engineering services from RJN for this fiscal year, for the construction management, and the design for next year. So, happy to say that we are done, in large part, with the Ward 4 study area. That area had a lot of backyard sewers, would present a lot of constructibility issues and increased costs, you know, having to deal with people's fences and sheds, and large trees, and power lines, and all that fun stuff. So, aside from a few small repairs in that area, we'll be shifting our focus into this red highlighted area. The blue areas that you see there are areas that have been previously studied and completed. So, we're into the last remaining unstudied area in this program. Moving forward, the, the areas in blue there are the construction areas for this year's rehabilitation program, those are the, the lining areas, as well as the point repairs. The red hashed area is the area that will be cleaned and televised, so pretty minimally impactful to the residents there. And then, there is a little bit of added design cost this year. We're having a couple of force mains inspected, these are force mains that were built in the 1950s and 60s, and we're having RJN review some of the televising there, and do some analysis on if those need to be improved or not. So, that's the reason, along with the, the analysis of some of those sewers that run through private properties and a larger televising program this year, that's kind of the reason for the increase in the engineering fees in that regard.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Alderman Currielli?
Yes, I wasn't clear where the force mains are, there's one listed here on, which I guess is the Woods one, where's the Ash?
It's very hard to see, it's right, you're not going to see the laser on the screen there, it's at the, right off Irving Park and Ash Avenue, there's a very small highlighted area.
Oh, okay, I think I see a little, it's like a little block, lip, right next to a blue box?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, got it.
And between those two blue boxes along Irving is the Ash Avenue lift station. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and RJN Group for the fiscal year 2026 infiltration and inflow program in an amount not to exceed $254,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Along the same lines as the previous comments, any questions on this specific one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?[1666.91]